Good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Please be advised that this meeting is video and audio livestream. If you have not already done so, please sign in for an accurate record-keeping of attendance. As is customary, we will begin our meeting with a prayer today offered by Pastor Rob Grue from First Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedom we are given in these United States of America, where we can praise you and pray to you at the opening of this meeting. Hear our prayers as we offer them up to you, oh God. We pray for all the peace officers, EMTs, firefighters, deputies, and our own Sheriff Tony, and the support services, that those who called to help those in crisis be kept safe by your holy angels and keep them all from harm. We pray for the men and women of our armed forces in the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, and Coast Guard, that those serving both far and near, that they may know your grace and mercy. Keep them safe. We are thankful for the freedom we are given to live in this blessed land, and we pray for peace in the Ukraine. We pray for the county commissioners here and all the support staff that work diligently to make our country, our county, safe and productive in the call to serve you and the good people of Washington County. We pray that all who work, that they do, and the decisions made will glorify you. We pray in the Holy Spirit that you will guide them, lead them, and protect them in their call to serve our community, support their families in the days and nights when they are away from them during their call to serve the community. We are grateful for the hard work and dedication that our Commissioner Diana Iri Vaughn has given to this county over the years and how you have guided her in all her good works in Washington County. Oh Lord, we pray that whatever you call our dear sister in Christ next to in this life to serve you again, that she will shine as brilliantly as she has here in the works for our county. We pray for the people of Hawaii and Maui and the devastation that they have suffered, that we may be one in bringing support to them. We pray for the people of Washington County, that we continue to know your love for us and all that we may be a people that work together as one to glorify your son's holy name in Jesus' name, in whom we trust and pray. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor. Also, now for leading us in our pledge of allegiance, we have Lance Corporal Patrick Meehan, a friend of mine. He's going to lead us in the pledge. He's a retired Lance Corporal from the United States Marine Corps. He spent the majority of his service in Subic Bay Philippines as an infantryman. Today, Mr. Meehan resides in Washington with his loving wife, and he continues to serve his community as a member of the Veterans Advisory Board, the Marine Corps League, the VFW, and he's the first person to claim to American Legion.
I proudly introduce to the free land of the United States of America, into which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lance Corporal.
Thank you. I'm sorry to say that due to technical difficulties, we cannot get the agenda to appear on the screens. I'll now entertain a motion to approve meeting minute number 1171, dated July 20th, 2023.
Second.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes. We have no special order of business, but we will take a very brief recess for photos. The information has not been verified. Understand, somebody came in after the meeting started. I'm sorry, we have guidelines and policies that we follow, so you won't be permitted to speak since you did not sign up prior to the meeting start. So, the first person to speak today is Christine. Is it Cardinal?
Yes, it's Cardinal.
Cardinal, I thought I was going to misput. If you want to come to the mic, thank you.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking you all for your service, especially you, Natalie Vaughn. I really appreciate Natalie Commissioner all the years. We've worked together for many years.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. I wanted to yield my two, yield two minutes to gentleman in the back.
We don't do that, but can you, I'm so sorry, can you use the?
I read the policy, and it indicated in the policy that I could combine my speech of three minutes and just give two minutes to another. I read the policy before I entered.
That's not.
That as a group, two people can speak for five minutes, and I was going to yield my time to Mr. Papa Joss. I did wonder if that was perhaps the case. I'm merely here to support Judge McDonald and.
What would you like to do? Would you like one person to speak?
No, I believe that everyone will use their three minutes.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, it's okay. It was hard to hear with the sirens too.
I was here early, and I think I created some confusion because of the move.
Okay.
Across the street.
Okay.
I apologize, I was the first one here with my, from my group. I'm just here to speak on behalf of the dependency lawyers, court-appointed lawyers in dependency court, and simply to say that we support Judge McDonald wholeheartedly, that she's been an example and truly a crusader for the children and families of Washington County. And I, for one, am proud to do so, to follow her footsteps. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next is Sarah O'Brien.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am here, there's some concerns I have on the budget with you guys. You know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I sound like a record, I say it, that I live in Monaca Hill, and sometimes it's the forgotten valley, the Commissioners do come out for events and stuff like that. We can agree that there is a drug problem in the county. Where does it start? At home with friends? How many of snuck to smoke or drink from your parents? How many times have you heard as things goes, "Do as I say, not as I do"? How many times have you repeated it? Times are different now. I'm here to discuss the DARE program. It's a great program all the way around, education for everyone. I'm sure we can agree on that. We all have children, some of our children have children, and so on. It was disappointing to find out that they are not in the budget. This is an educational program, and we would like to know what, well, residents and I would like to know why they have to come up with their funding for these kids for this program to continue to be run. That is, like, these kids count. These kids are our future. Here's mine right here, she's four, she'll be going to pre-K. She goes to work with me too. I mean, where, where can, sometimes at home, they don't get the proper teaching at home. So why can't we get this on the budget as a line item for the DARE program? And then also, the K-9 funding, can we get that somewhere on a line item, on the budget, to help out with that as well? There's, I did look at the budget, I see where, you know, reductions have been done, where offices have been eliminated, where there's been hiring, and then so on, with the 35 cuts, the 25 on, and the 14 still vacant. So that's all I'm asking, is if we can get those two on the budget somewhere. And online, I'll give this to your Chief Clerk, here's everything that involves the community with the DARE program, how it got in collaboration in 1983. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. You're next, Jenny.
Faith Pajolobok, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the abused and neglected animals of Washington County. Whether or not you know this, we have one of the highest rates of abuse in the state. We have staggering numbers of homeless cats, and we have one of the lowest prosecution rates in the state. So what I'm asking the Commissioners is to make Washington County a humane county. Why should that matter? Since 1750, Hogarth was the first to notice the correlation between animal abuse and human abuse. So look at serial killers, mass shooters, domestic violence, and child abuse, and you will find a correlation. As far as Washington County, our serial killers, Lescov and Travaglia, so I believe only one is still alive, were skinning rabbits alive before they became serial killers. Grandmother reported it, nothing was done. Eighteen horses left to starve to death on Route 18 several years ago. I still have one. Nothing happened to her. Two hundred and two cats taken from the Denora Church. Okay? Public and private people pay the cost. They didn't dig up the buried cats or any of that. They allowed her to plead no contest to two misdemeanors, and she's at it again. We look out the puppy mill and hope well. The search warrant was improperly written, and the whole case had to be dropped. Recently, a little dog was burned with a blowtorch out on Route 40, a therapy dog. Fortunately, the state police did arrest the person. Whether or not she'll be prosecuted is kind of doubtful. In July, a bald eagle was shot and killed, okay? The residents knew, and I knew, that we could not count on this county to do anything. So we notified the United States Attorney, and Steve Kaufman saw that a federal grand jury was convened, he's been indicted, and our hope is that he will go to prison what he deserves. Why should you care about them? The correlation, but you also need to think of the contributions of animals to human society. The cats have been here for 417 years. They came with colleagues. They came for protection for food and protection from disease. They've served in the military, the Kodiak cat, the horses without which we have never settled this country, okay? Sergeant Reckless is a famous military veteran who is a horse. Horses work for the police. We have a therapeutic writing in Washington County in Strunk, right? Dogs, 22 veterans, and that child should know this, commit suicide every day. No veteran who has gotten a medical service dog has committed suicide. The dogs are in Maui now, what are they doing? They're looking for cadavers. They work with the police, they work with the fire department, but yet we allow these animals to be completely abused in this county, and we do nothing and have no resources for the prosecution and arrest of people who actually abuse them. So I'm going to give you this petition, it's just started, we're going to have many more signatures, but since I have to go back to teaching on Monday, I thought I'd come today. And there's also a study here about the need for a high-level clinic.
Thank you very much. Next, Denny, are you a property owner in the county?
I am not.
Are you a resident in the county?
Not.
I'm sorry, our policy is property owner or resident speak. If there's something you'd like to leave with us to look at, we're happy to do that later. So the next up is Jim Jeffries.
Hi, Chair. Worst time here. I have to, I have to admit, Nick Camerio looks great. He does clean up well.
Is it that Diane always looks great?
Oh, gee, well, that goes without saying.
Diane has to be the bad guy and enforce all the policies, that's all.
With your permission, Chair, Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this time today at your meeting. Today, I am here to speak on behalf of Judge Tracy McDonald. It has come to my intention that aspersions have been cast upon her by members of my profession that serve in her court. I would like at this time to give a character sketch of her and my experiences serving in her court. And the other lawyers that are here are also here today to support the same experiences that we have all had before Judge McDonald. She conducts her court in a fair and impartial way. I have never witnessed or experienced any conduct by Judge McDonald that in any way paints her character as a judge in any way other than professional, fair, kind, and wise. She rolls her sleeves up and seeks to root out the problems of the families and children that come before her every day. She always has snacks for the children, and even gives out toys and other items that brighten the day of the children and the parents of those children that come before her, of course. She uses her wisdom and patience to do what is in the best interest of the children, and if that is a problem, then those that cast aspersions against her are wrong and frankly misguided. The aspersions that have been cast against her are a weak attempt by individuals that have left their jobs for reasons that have nothing to do with Judge McDonald or her rules. They are simply untrue. We can all attest as officers of the court, there's my colleagues in the back, that Judge McDonald is the right person at the right time for dependency court. She's a pleasure to be in front of, she allows us attorneys to put on her cases, and makes rulings that are fair and impartial. Judge McDonald is our judge, and we are here to show that we support her and back her in every way. We love Judge McDonald, and it's very disappointing and shocking that Judge McDonald has had to endure allegations and aspersions against her. Once again, thank you for your time in this forum.
Thank you. At last, we have Benita Thompson.
If I may, yes. Good afternoon, my name is Benita Thompson, I'm a 20-year resident of Washington County, and I've been a lawyer for the past 30 years. I'm currently working in dependency court representing children as a guardian ad litem. I spend two or three days per week in the courtroom of Judge Tracy McDonald. I actually came out of retirement to represent children out of a sense of duty and simply because I was asked to by Judge McDonald. I am not a personal friend of Judge McDonald. She is a peer who I became acquainted with about 20 years ago. We know each other through our work only. Like my colleagues in the back, I've also become aware of children and youth services complaints regarding claims of being treated badly by the courts. Neither I nor any of my colleagues have been asked by anyone about our experience in the dependency courtrooms. We're here today because we can't stand by and allow this one-sided, false narrative to flourish any longer. I and my colleagues represent a breadth and depth of legal experience. We practice in the federal courts and in courtrooms in Washington, Westmoreland, Fayette, Green, Allegheny, Somerset, Butler, Beaver, and Bedford Counties, just to name a few. Throughout our careers, we've all sat uncomfortably in courtrooms and listened while a judge unfairly berated an opponent, a witness, or one of us. That hasn't been our experience in Judge McDonald's courtroom. Judge McDonald treats all participants with fairness, compassion, and kindness. Still, complaints are being made by children and youth services regarding unfair treatment. So what is happening? What's happening is that children and youth services is being held accountable for their actions or lack of action. In the past year, I've personally been involved in cases where children and youth services has been found to have failed to use reasonable efforts to protect no less than eight children. My colleagues have been involved in other cases where similar findings have been made. It's not just Judge McDonald who's making these findings. Our dependency hearing officers have both made similar decisions. Generally speaking, this finding of no reasonable efforts means that children and youth services has failed to meet its legal duty to provide services to families. These decisions also result in the agency, Children and Youth Services, losing its federal funding to care for these children. Therefore, because of children and youth services' failure, the financial burden of care for these children falls on the taxpayers of Washington County. Children and youth services matters are confidential, as you all know. For that reason, I am unable to share the often gruesome details of these cases. I'm not intending to demonize anyone at Children and Youth Services, I think they do the best that they can. What's needed is systemic changes to policies, procedures, and oversight requirements. Please rest assured that Judge McDonald is conducting herself as the faithful and respectful public servant that she has always been, throughout 15 years as a prosecutor, her time on the Magisterial District Judge Bench, and her time on the Court of Public Place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you all coming. Denny, I'm sorry, we've had policies, we haven't let other people speak, so I can't break our policy.
Am I a business owner here?
No, it's property owner or resident, I'm sorry. So that's all the public comment, we appreciate you all coming and sharing your feelings with us, and thank you very much. We will move on to Old Business with Solicitor Graham.
Thank you very much. Purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners award the broadband services proposal intended upon funding for a unified turnkey solution providing broadband connectivity for 2,600 residential and commercial targets in the East Philly Township, Donaville Township, and 10-mile precursors to Comcast Cable Communications LLC of Philadelphia. For 392 miles of fiber, a total cost of $27,814,387, of which Washington County will pay $18,841,175, with remainder of $8,973,212 being supplemented by Comcast. Washington County's costs will be funded from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. Portions of this award are stipulated upon the award of either Art Power and/or PA Capital Projects Funds.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners approve an extension of the bid contract for industrial commodities to the following vendors based on their percentage discount from their catalog website unit costs. WW Granger, Lake Forest, Illinois, through a local Pittsburgh office; Sherman Williams, Washington County, Washington, PA. If approved, this extension will be effective through August 31, 2024. All the terms and conditions of the current agreement remain in full force.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners approve an addendum to our current coffee and equipment agreement with JD Mara Hotel and Restaurant Service, Washington, PA, to transfer ownership to Bellport Coffee and Food Service Company, LLC, Kansburg, PA. If approved, this agreement will continue through August 31, 2024, under the same contract terms and conditions, with an option to extend for one additional year.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Pursuant to Act 142, Senate Bill 1154, effective February 20, 2001, purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners authorize a 30-day extension of the proposed award for the Parks Master Site Plan for Washington County, as additional time is needed to evaluate the bid response.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners reject all submissions for engineering services, consulting, and bid specs for Washington County's Courthouse Square Parking Garage and Plaza.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Purchasing on behalf of Building and Grounds, respectfully requests the Commissioners approve change order number 10 in the amount of $9,628 with Stone Mountain Group in Kansburg, PA. This change will alter the amount of the current contract from $2,734,659.65 to $2,744,287.65, and it's been reviewed and recommended by Justin Welsh, Building and Grounds, Pack Grand Courts, and Bracy Corporation, Washington, PA, and Butcher Born Architects of Pittsburgh, PA.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Purchasing on behalf of Building and Grounds, respectfully requests the Commissioners approve change order number two for the Caldwell Building Project in the amount of $9,628 with the Bracy Corp., Washington, PA. This change will alter the amount of the current contract from $713,879 to $719,079, and will provide for the installation of a judge's bench and witness stand. This change order has been reviewed and recommended by Justin Welsh, Building and Grounds, Pack Grand Courts.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing as per Section 1805 of the County Code governing the sale or disposition of personal property to the county, respectfully requests the Commissioners authorize a resolution for the donation of furniture items from the Center for Community Resources, Inc., to the Washington County Human Services, who has formerly requested the, 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 sorry, the donation and completed the application for donation, has met all required criteria.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Clerk, on behalf of Finanz, respectfully requests the Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing Diana Iri Vaughn, Chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners, as signatory for the Community Traffic Safety Project District 12-0 Grant Program.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Chief Clerk, on behalf of Finanz, respectfully requests the Commissioners approve a project director authorization form with PennDOT for the Community Traffic Safety Project District 12-0 Grant Program. The authorization designates Diana Iri Vaughn, Chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners, as the project director for the grant.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of Finanz, respectfully requests the Commissioners approve renewal agreement with Highway Safety Network, Inc., for the District 12-0 Community Traffic Safety Network Program. The agreement will be for the period of October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2026, and is contingent upon funding from PennDOT.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of WCCED, respectfully requests the Commissioners adopt a resolution for the sale of lot 17B, 8.108 acres of land located at Star Point Business Park in Hanover Township, Hanover and Smith Townships, to Hornman Flexon LLC, for the purchase price of $491,880, with all proceeds to be used to offset outstanding debt on the property.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully requests the Commissioners adopt a resolution to the agreement with Alta Vista Business Park, located in Fallowfield Township, extending the term of the exemptions, deductions, abatements, and credits for real property, earned income tax, net profits, mercantile, and business privilege taxes within a specific geographic area in Washington County designated as a Keystone Opportunity Expansion Zone or Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of Public Safety, respectfully requests the Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair of the Board, Diana Iri Vaughn, to electronically sign all grant documents related to Pima administered grants, which require an electric signature.
Call call, please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of Elections, respectfully requests the Commissioners approve a ratification of a grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, DCED, for the Election Integrity Grant Program as established under Act 88 of 2022. The application is in the amount of $750,000. The application is in the amount of $750,758.97, which is the amount allocated to Washington County.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of Elections, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, DCED, for the Election Integrity Grant Program. The agreement is in the amount of $750,758.97, and will be for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, respectfully request the Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a conditional award of funds and grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for the 2023 Fair Fund.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, respectfully request the Commissioners approval to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office for a community drug abuse prevention grant in the amount of $2,000 to create a challenge coin outreach program for individuals experiencing a substance use disorder crisis. The one-time grant application does not have a match requirement, so no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Pardon me. Chief Clerk, on behalf of Juvenile Probation, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a grant agreement and attachments with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Juvenile Court Judges Commission for the Juvenile Probation Services Grant Program. The agreement is in the amount of $250,889, and will be for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of Children and Youth Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a MOU with the Washington County Court of Common Pleas for the provision of the LEAD program for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. The total amount is $907,960, and no county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of Children and Youth Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a MOU with the Washington County Court of Common Pleas for the provision of the jobs program for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. The total amount is $340,400, and no county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Planning, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a contract in the amount of $494,502.49 with Gibson Thomas Engineering Company, Inc. for the replacement of the Shartiers Creek Bridge, Number 64, in North Franklin Township. The total contract cost will be paid with federal funds and no matches required.
So moved. Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve provider agreements for a total of $3830,000 for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, and no additional county funds are required.
So moved. Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve provider agreements for the provision of psychological evaluations with the suggested providers at a total cost of $500,000 for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Hughes Forensics and Behavioral Consultants, LLC, for the provision of risk of harm assessments and non-offending parenting interventions for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. The contract authorization amount is $100,000, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement addendum with Keystone Adolescent for placement services for the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. The contract authorization amount will be increased to $620,000, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement addendum with Invisware for safety devices for caseworkers for the period of May 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. The contract authorization amount will be increased to $7,500, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Yes. Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve and ratify the county assurance of financial commitment and participation associated with needs-based plan budget for the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. The county match requirement is approximately $5,800,000, which is based on a projected budget of $37,760,560.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve provider agreements in the amount of $143,000 for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, and no additional county funds are required.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Art Human Services for residential services for the period of June 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. The contract authorization amount is $685,500, $685,500, and no additional county funds are required. Sorry.
So moved. Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve an assurance of compliance associated with the Human Services Block Grant Application for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. The funds are provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve purchase of service agreement addendum with Anne Bertha for the provision of their enterprise platform, which provides a comprehensive network of community resources, a referral and tracking system, and support services to extend the term one year from September 24th, 2023, through September 23rd, 2024. The contract authorization amount is $56,389, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve grant agreements with the recommended providers in the amount of $293,000 for emergency shelter services for the period of July 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2024. The funds are provided by HUD, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve an agreement with the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank in an amount of up to $300,000 to administer the state food purchase program for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, and no additional county funds are required.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the Commissioners approve an agreement with the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank in an amount of up to $50,000 to administer the temporary emergency food assistance program for the period of October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024, and no additional county funds are required.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of Building and Grounds respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the advertising for plumbing supplies.
Second.
Vocal please.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.